Good afternoon, we are beginning for our call meeting for April the 30th of 2025. At this time, we'd like everybody to please rise for invocation and follow by the pleas of belief.
Pastor, will you do the honors?
Father God, in the name of Jesus, fathers, once again, we thank you for the beautiful and marvelous day. And Father, we invite you into this meeting with Lord God, pray God, everything will be done decently hand in order. And Father, we ask that you have your way, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I present the witness.
Do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clyburn, do we need to go to executive session for anything?
No, we don't need executive session.
Okay, can I get an approval of general item with the omission of executive session?
Sir, move.
Second, second. All in favor? Unanimous? Public hearing, ordinance eight five one. An ordinance of the county council of Marlborough County, South Carolina, approve and agreement with Pathway Physician Texas P L L C and authorize the implementation of a voluntary opt-out, opting-in fee of nine dollars per month to be added to the county of Marlborough property bill, tax bill, providing a severity clause, providing a repeater clause, and providing an effective date. Mr. Chairman, I see we have a lot of citizens here today that would like to speak on this public hearing. Before we get started, counsel, we cannot add or make comments. Each person, we have opportunity to speak, each person will have three minutes. In three minutes, after three minutes, I will hit my gavel and you'll be, tell you to be seated or move on the podium. My timekeeper is over there, she will raise her hand with thirty seconds left, okay?
Mr. Chairman. Yes. I think we all know the situation and the reason so many people are here, a lot of talk about it. You know, we advertise these meetings, they had community meetings and stuff, but there still seems to be a good number of people that don't quite, didn't quite make the meetings and stuff. And opting in appears, even though it says opt-out, opt-in, that's the reason these people are here, opt-out and opt-in. The vast majority of people here, probably hundred percent, they want it opt-in, the people have to sign up for it. And the rest of the people that don't want it, which a lot of people, ninety percent or better probably, have this program on their insurance. And they don't want to, want it put on their taxes. And that's, that's my comments on it, I'm sure that opt-in is the best thing for this candidate to move forward with this project. And I do think there are people in this candidate that need it, and that's just my opinion.
Okay, that's, that's all really good, but at this point right now, we're here to hear from the citizen of Marlborough County that is here. So we'd like for them to, they did no sign-in sheets, so if you just come up one at a time, state your name, and sir? Okay, Dr. Dirk? Dr. Dirk?
Dr. Perry.
Dr. Perry?
Go to the microphone, yes, sir. All right, well, I'm Dr. Dirk Perry, I go by Dr. Dirk. I appreciate the counsel putting this on, allowing me to come talk to you guys today. The one thing I'm seeing today is Marlboro County has to engage the community. I've talked to a few of you while I've been out here, and I've heard the same thing a few times over and over, and you guys have some valid concerns about a fee that's being discussed being placed on your property tax bill. Before we discuss that fee, I want to tell you a little bit about the service that you would be receiving for that fee. So I'm an ER doctor, I've been working twenty years, and if the one thing I've seen is what happens when someone doesn't have access to healthcare, or comes in too late to healthcare. Every ER shift I work, I see someone that left it too long, and we say, if you would only come in sooner. And most of those people don't have access to the doctor. Those that do have access, the young mom that works new jobs, has a couple of kids at home, she comes into my ER late at night with her five and six-year-old, seeing things they shouldn't see in the ER. And I spend just a few minutes of time with them, write them a five-dollar prescription, but the hospital, the hospital system charges them fifteen hundred dollars for a simple strep throat, that just shouldn't be, shouldn't happen like that. And so, it wasn't until about four years ago, I started a company to fix that, to offer an alternative. It's based off the way a doctor treats his own friends and family. When my friends and family get sick, they simply text me, they say, "I'm sick," or "Aunt Millie's sick," and ten to twenty text messages, maybe a video, a couple of pictures. And I'm calling them a five-dollar prescription to the pharmacy, and what was a minor inconvenience for me was a huge benefit for my friends and family. And so we thought, why not offer a system where everyone has access, as if they had a family member that's a doctor? And so we launched that four years ago, and we've seen a lot of success. We actually launched it in the community next door, in Chesterfield. And it was, it was a little slow start, one of our biggest costs is community engagement, and I'm already seeing these communities engage. Our first month, we saw just a hundred and thirty patients in Chesterfield County. However, six months later, we saw two thousand patients. And what that helps me is there's a big group and a big need in these local communities. Marlboro is a county of hard-working people. But I want you to all imagine right now, you get sick right now today, or your children get sick, or your grandchildren get sick, how easy is it for you to go see a doctor the next day? What are your options? What is that going to cost you? Our service is a simple text message. Within just two minutes, there's no office staff, no secretary telling you something, you have a doctor on the other end, answering your question, figuring out what is the diagnosis, and sending a low-cost prescription with a discount card to your local pharmacy. Our average prescription cost for our patients is under twenty dollars. And so, what we are offering is a fix in the broken healthcare system. We all know the healthcare system is broken. When you go to the hospital and get charged fifteen hundred dollars for a strep throat diagnosis, that just shouldn't happen. And so unless there's another opportunity, another option, that's going to continue. Your concern is valid about the fee, and I think most of you don't really know much about the service, but you see the fee set for you. What this really is, is a nine dollars per month fee that would cover you and everyone in your family texting to our service to see a doctor as many times as you want. We don't care if we have insurance, no insurance, we don't charge insurance. That, that fee that you would pay, because it's annualized, because we'd be under property tax, about a hundred and eight dollars, would cover you and up to ten family members unlimited times in your household. You could use it one hundred and twenty times, it's the same fee. Now what we want to do is we want to make it optional. And so it is an opt-out. Now why is it an opt-out? And I'll tell you why it's an opt-out, is because most people don't think about the healthcare until they need it. Most people don't think about the kid that's gotten sick until, oh, my goodness, we need to go to the doctor. And then by that time, it's too late to sign up. But what we want to do is offer you a grace period of four months. Try it out, you have four months to try this out, the pre-trial, if you don't want it, you simply opt-out. There's no one going to come after you for that fee if you don't pay it. At the next year, when that property tax comes on their bill, and you see that healthcare fee, if you don't pay that fee, and you pay your property taxes, please simply consider it an opt-out. No one's going to come after you for that fee. But we want it to be offered to as many people as possible. But counsel, if you decide to say no, you're saying no for everybody. You say, you can't have this, no one can have it, but when you say yes, you empower every individual here to make a decision, do I want this, or do I not? And we're going to make it so easy to opt-out, you've got great insurance, you can get in with your doctor easy. This may not be for you, we want you to easily opt-out, that fee will not be on your bill. But those that don't have options, probably aren't here, they're out working, two jobs, they are not well represented probably in this room. If they need an option to see a doctor for their children, and not recharge fifteen hundred dollars, that goes to be only option they have. This fee is not mandatory, it's optional, you're going to get a trial of the service. But if you want to be a good neighbor to those that couldn't attend today, you just simply opt-out and say, I'm not going to participate. But it gives everyone an opportunity, but when you tell the counsel to say no, you're saying, no one can have this, no one can have an opportunity. It's too much on us on me to click that box and say, I don't want it. I promise you that at the end of the year, at the beginning of next year, if you don't pay that fee, it's simply considered an opt-out, and you're just taken off the list of the service. No one is going to come after you if you want that fee, if you pay your property tax, but you don't pay the healthcare fee, it's simply an opt-out. So I wish, as you guys come up here, I'm sure you're going to have some questions I didn't answer. Counsel has my phone number, I'm happy to answer those questions. It's very difficult, because I know this, you've clearly come up to take your piece, and I don't really have the opportunity to discuss. But if you do want to discuss, I would be big that back in the morning, I'm happy to answer some of those questions. Counsel, I really appreciate your time, I'm passionate about this, I'm on mission to solve this healthcare crisis. And it is a crisis, Marlboro County is probably the largest stricken of communities for this crisis. You're without a hospital system, it's not easy access to a doctor, and we can't continue, a lot of our healthcare system charges fifteen hundred dollars for simple everyday medical items. And this is the solution. Yeah, it is a little bit of heavy lift. You've got, you've got some people in front of you that are going to come tell you about the onus of the, of the fee. But it's not mandatory, they simply don't pay it at the end of the year, they click the box, there's going to be easy mechanisms to opt-out. They don't have to participate, but when you say no, you make that decision on behalf of everyone in the community. Those that are working a job right now can't be here to represent themselves, you're representing them as well. So I just want to remind you of that. So I thank you for the opportunity, I'm going to step down, and I'm sure the community has some really good thoughts they'd like to share as well.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you. Billy, we do not have a sign-up sheet. The way I've been raised, ladies go first. So we throw the inside in here, any lady that would like to come up and speak, you got your three minutes, go ahead. Just state your name and go right into it.
I appreciate what the doctor said, because I didn't quite understand what was going on. Do good, Councilman Burdo, I think it should be an opt-in only, I don't think it should come to my taxes and upset me, or any of the other people in Marlboro County that don't understand this.
Is the microphone on?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? All right, well, I'm going to yell this. Can you hear me now? All right, I appreciate what Councilman Burdo said, I think it should be an only opt-in situation. I don't think that we should be able to opt-out, I just don't think, it should be on our bills, period. The people that want this service, opt-in. I know they said that we could not pay it come tax time, but somewhere something's going to slip through the holes, I believe, and it's going to bite us in the behinds. And I just don't think it should be there. Number two, I'd like to see a copy of the proposed contract between Pathway Physicians and the County of Marlboro. I'd like to know how it's benefiting Marlboro County so far as in the budget. I'd like to know how it's benefiting the people out there that's receiving this, I'd like to know where the money's going. If that money that the council's collecting is going into a private fund, not co-mingled with all the other Marlboro County funds? So they're going to see what goes in, goes out. Because if you've got a thousand people signing up for this service, that's a hundred and eight dollars per thousand people, you want to see that that hundred and eight dollars goes out to this Pathway Physicians. Does that make sense? All right, I also have a legal background. And to me, with my legal background, if Marlboro's collecting some money anywhere for this service, and this particular tele-doctor, or whoever he is, prescribed something that is wrong, they have a serious side effect, or even say death results, a good attorney is going to come in here, I would think, and be able to sue not only the telehealth doctor, Pathway Physicians, and the County of Marlboro, could make a party to the lawsuit for wrongful death. That scares me in a small community like this that doesn't have the money to do things like this. I just don't think, he made it sound good, like it's a great service for everyone, and like I said, not everyone needs this service, so that's why it should be opt-in only. So if we could make that rule, I think we got something, but I still want to know about the liability for Marlboro County, and maybe an attorney can answer that for me, but I want to know what, with us collecting the money, what in the world should we get sued?
Thank you, ma'am. Next lady. And a female next who would like to speak? So there are no females that want to talk? Please state your name, and you have three minutes.
My name is Jane King, and I'm from Tyrell, and I have had benefit of Indian Health Pathways for the past year almost. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about it. It is what it is. I can call them at nine o'clock at night, and they can diagnose me over the phone, and get some medicine called in to me. If it is something serious, they will refer you. I had an employee who had a terrible, terrible sore throat, and so she called me and explained her situation, sent pictures of her throat, and they said, well, it appears that you might have strep throat. And then she said, and my neck is so stiff, I can hardly turn it. And they said, well, this adds something new to it, this could be something else, we need to get you to the emergency room immediately, and let you get checked out. They said, we will call you, we will call the emergency room and let them know you're coming. She went to the emergency room, she did not have encephalitis, but she did have a very severe case of strep throat. They were able to get her medicine and take care of her. And because of that, she was able to start the road to recovery and get back to work quickly. My cousin was very, very sick one afternoon, and he'd been sick for several days, and guys sometimes don't want to call and get any help, but he called Indian Health Pathways, they said, have you taken a COVID test? He said, yes, I did. Have you taken a flu test? No, I don't have one. Can you get one? His wife was on her way home from school, she stopped by the drugstore, got a flu test, came home, he took the test. Within ten minutes, he had sent the results back, they said, you do have the flu, we have called you in some medicine. And that was all in a matter of about ten minutes. I went to McDonald's this morning, and I don't know how many of you have had a breakfast or a meal at McDonald's recently, but it was ten dollars and something. This Pathways is the best thing that has happened to Chesterfield County. I have insurance, I have good insurance, I have state insurance, but this service, I can go to an urgent care, but it's going to cost me sixty-five dollars for an urgent care. This service has been a game changer for my family. We have used it numerous times, whenever we would feel a sniffle coming off. Before we went to the ladies' final four championship in Tampa. I started getting sick on Thursday, on Friday, I called Indian Pathways, they went through my symptoms, and it just sounds like you need to take some Tylenol and drink lots of fluids. But if you have anything green that you start spitting up, or your nose...
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Hi, my name is Ashley at Ballpoint, Jeffy and Dennis Steele. The thing about adding something on our taxes is when it get on, it's hard to get it off. Even though the thing doesn't exist anymore, we still paying taxes. We don't have a hospital here, and we need one, but if we were in a bigger city, we'd be just as close, Marlboro, Tyrell, depending on where you live, are twenty to thirty minutes away, if you were in a bigger city, you'd have to travel just as far to get one. I think if we're going to add taxes to pay something, we need to be trying to think about how to get a building here with people here, and somebody like N U S C. Our hospital before, they said people didn't go, no, they didn't, because the service was inferior, they were killing people, I don't think it's one of the people that killed them. So we need a hospital here that has good staff, something like a teaching hospital, because most of the time, they are more advanced than other hospitals. But I don't think we should be adding taxes on for telemedicine, like somebody said, most of our insurance is covered that anyway.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Dr. Tammy Hale, I'm the Assistant Superintendent in Chesterfield County School District. So I want to share a quick personal story about Indian Health Pathways and the impact it has on, it's had on our families in Chesterfield County. So back in January, it was about to start second semester in the school district, a lot going on, you know, our leadership team was going to meet, and so I had that terrible cold, I could not talk, and you know, of course, if I showed up, everybody would be afraid to sit near me. So at this point, I just didn't have time to sit in a doctor's office, okay? So after checking with one of my colleagues in the school district who had already had this service, and she actually sent me a text message, you can't see it, but it just goes through everything that, it was either a nurse practitioner or another doctor told her exactly what to do. It's very, very extensive information. So what, what I did was check with, I told you that, I was speaking with physician assistant, that's who I was talking with, who diagnosed me, prescribed medication, and followed up days later to check on me. They don't just stop right there, they, they text you back and say, how are you, and are you better? So it was very professional, compassionate care delivered right from my living room. So, and beyond my story, there was another person in my office, I just talked to her before I came here today, and she, it was Easter, it was right before Easter, so the doctors were closed, and she needed some medication, and she got it immediately. And for parents without transportation, for those who can't afford to miss work, as y'all were talking earlier, and for children who get sick after hours, this is reliable care, is a lifeline. It's not just convenience, it's access. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next. You got one coming.
Hello, I'm Sarah Hires, and I'm in the business. I just have a couple of concerns. My first concern was the two thousand, I guess, patients that they have picked up in a year? How many healthcare workers will we lose in this county? Because two thousand can call an eight-hundred number. If one receptionist, one person loses a job in Marlboro County, because y'all opted in on this, that's a shame. Secondly, I'm sure it's a wonderful company in Texas. However, have we looked in the South Carolina Telehealth Association that has McLeod, Primera, Department of Mental Health, Spartanburg, South Carolina Education, it's right here. Anybody wants to see the numbers, you can call, regardless of where you live, and it's a South Carolina agency. So I worry about the minimum wage receptionists, the doctors, we've lost a hospital, we have doctors leaving. We're catering to doctors to try to come in, and they are not coming here. Why is that? Let's protect Marlboro County, and get Marlboro County doctors in here, that we will support them and not sell them out to another place in Texas.
Hello, I'm Donna Kinsler, I'm a lifelong resident of Marlboro County. I'm here to speak on behalf of my mother. She is a widow, and she is a senior citizen, she cannot afford anything else to be put on her taxes. My sister and I have to go through her bills to make sure that she is doing everything properly. She may not see that on her taxes, then she's going to pay for something that she's not using. Myself, I don't need, I get free telehealth anyway, through my insurance, so does my husband. We use telehealth at least once a month. So we don't need this. Marlboro County needs to look at the senior citizens of this county, and the widows and widowers of this county, they can't afford anything else. So in order to show these people that you're going to be responsible and help them, y'all need to opt-out of this. I don't think that this is something that Marlboro County needs, and for the people that, yes, they can call and get their prescriptions through this company, and like the lady said earlier, they may not have transportation to get to a doctor, how are they going to have the transportation to get, pick up their prescriptions? I mean, if you don't have transportation to go to a doctor, you don't have transportation to pick up a prescription. Is this company going to deliver their prescriptions to them?
Any more females? We got female colors, sir? No, please, ladies first, ladies first, he can wait.
Good afternoon, counsel, thank you for having us here. I hate it's this time of day, my staff is short, we're already, we're already a short staff, I'll try to talk louder. I'm Rebecca MacArthur, I am a lifelong resident of Marlboro County, I am a small business owner, and by small business, that does not mean that we have a hundred employees, it means that we're trying to cover seven days a week to offer our county, our community things to give back. I also, sir, was a registered nurse, worked trauma ICU with McLeod, so I have a medical background. I understand our healthcare desert, I also understand our food desert. I also understand that we cannot afford another tax. Is our tax assessor's office capable of handling this? I don't think so, we're behind on having records posted already compared to other counties around us. And I want to be clear, for anybody who is in favor of this, please hear my heart, I am not against you at all, but it should not be for me who's having to make sure and bring in extra staff on the day when I can't afford that payroll, to come to a noon meeting and say, I can't miss a check out to opt-out. And to feel that put that burden on me is not fair. They should have to opt-in, not taxpayers to opt-out. We are way burdened now. You said we are a hard-working community, we are a small community who needs infrastructure for buildings, not just buildings and a hospital. We need jobs here, and we need a workforce here. I have students who cannot even spell, who are wanting jobs. We need an educated labor force, and then they will be able to help themselves instead of having someone to have to always give them a handout. I'm all for a hand up, but we need help here in our county. And I do not want to have to check a box to opt-out. I don't have the time for that. I hope that we can continue this kind of presence here, I want transparency, and again, where have we made connections with McLeod, with N U S C, have we made connections with Scotland? Scotland Hospital shows up in our county, y'all, I know they do, because I've been privileged to be able to provide some services for them. They're putting money in our county, trying to help the people who are here. And I appreciate the ones who are in Chesterfield County who've come to share your voice, but you're not vested here, and that's no disrespect to you, it's our Marlboro County residents, I've seen it back and forth on Facebook, I didn't even know about this until I saw it on Facebook.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank y'all.
Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon, my name is Jackie Anderson, and although we know that I work here in Marlboro County in healthcare, I'm not here representing, representing that organization today, I'm a resident of Marlboro County. And my concern is this opt-out. I agree with the community, this should be an opt-in on taxes, if y'all choose to move forward and not opt-out. I do want to let Miss Curley, while I'm here, quickly, Miss Curly, I did attend her initial session, with more information about the telemedicine. I was following up for the other councilmembers, maybe post it. But thank you again, I'm Lucy Payne, and my councilwoman, I'm not putting this out in his district, so that we have more information. in his district, so that we have more information. I learned about this meeting through social media. Um, had it not been for this program through social media, I would, my family members would have, um, probably, there's investors probably here, they would not have known either. Um, my thing is, a little bit of transparency, um, needs to happen here with Chesterfield County. We appreciate you all coming, but this is about Marlborough County. We pay taxes here, we have, we're, we're invested here. But y'all forgot to mention that the governor avoided Chesterfield County. Uh, I forget the dollar amount, I know it's well over a million dollars, but the telehealth medicine program. The residents of Chesterfield County are receiving that program, benefits from it, for free. And it's not going to be a tax, that's our profit, they're receiving for free, to a grant. So let's not look at Chesterfield, okay? Let's look at Marlborough County. And we have to take care of Marlborough County.
Any more, uh, females that speak, before we have the gentlemen to speak? They coming? Okay.
I'm here in support of MB Pathway, yes, I am.
We get a microphone.
I'm here in support of MB Pathway. Uh, I am from Chesterfield County, I also work in Chesterfield County, and we also have some Marlborough employees who are over in Chesterfield County. Um, it is a great service, my church family people use it. Um, are we here to talk about taxes, or are we here to talk about the health of the community for your people? In reference to your church, people who don't have insurance. Uh, people who don't have insurance have the ability to call in and get medical, uh, attention. Where they, where, where our hospitals are full, and shiraw, uh, and they're with your Marlborough County people, um, some of them. Uh, but if we can get telehealth, yes, I have insurance, I am an employee of the state. However, I have telehealth as well, even with the state. However, there are people who don't have insurance. The Marlborough people have insurance, where they can go and, uh, call the telehealth to get some, uh, medical attention. My church, my family, um, employees of Chesterfield County. Uh, again, I work for Chesco Services, all of our employees, they, they, they have, they have, they can use it, their family can use it, uh, even sometimes, most of our people are in Marlborough County, who work in Chesterfield County. So, uh, we're, we're, we're neighbors, we're neighbors, we just need to help each other out in reference to the people who don't have insurance, who could utilize this service. Um, yes, the grant is paying for it right now, and who's gonna pay for it later, I don't know, I really don't care. However, I, I'm concerned for my community, I'm concerned for the people who don't have insurance and could utilize the service, it is free. Uh, even my church will take the people to, you know, the appointment if they need to, um, right now, even before MB Pathway came in. Uh, we have PDR TA, if we're in about, you know, um, transportation or whatever, but it is a good service, I am in support of it, uh, because I use it in employment, and I also use it with my family and my churches, and we've also extended it to Columbia, um, so our Columbia area people, um, they have utilized the service as well. Even their family members who don't have insurance, they can just call in and get medical attention. Uh, where they can send somebody out to get, um, their med, their medicines. They'll tell, they'll give you, um, the pharmacy of your choice, just so you have someone to get it. But my purpose here today is in support because I've used it, my family's used it, my church family's used it, my employer, uh, and employees, uh, who are employed with Chesco Services have used it. And it is free right now, again, and I pray that we get it, you know, so it can, um, uh,
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Charlotte Groome. I've been a resident of Marlborough County all my life, and this option should be opt-in only. The people in this county cannot afford this. We have got so many senior citizens and people in Marlborough County that do not have internet, do have not access to computers or anything. And like you said, about the people being here, and the people that couldn't be here is working. I am retired, I have worked all my life, and it is not up to the citizens of Marlborough County to have to opt out of something that they don't want. If you can make this program work where you opt in, then I'm all for the people that need it. But if you can't, it needs to go from Marlborough County.
Go ahead, sir.
Chris, you're done, I've been a resident here all my life, so, just like some of you. And, uh, like I said, there, there's good things about this, this program, but a lot of stuff we weren't aware of until we spoke today, sir. And, uh, I don't afford to opt in on the, when our faculty's done. I mean, that, you know, that's only when everybody in Marlborough County has an option on this, not, not just the council voting on it, you know, just if you're making the decision. Um, my main thing today was, you know, why did so many, you know, so few people go about this? You know, until I started posting on social media? I, I got off the last few days, and I just, I posted left and right, everywhere I knew, to get this out. You know, it's like the council, you know, everybody else in, you know, Marlborough County posted on social media to get the information out, but, uh, the council seems to be still stuck on the Marlborough Herald, which hardly nobody reads or, to be honest, I didn't even know it still existed. We don't want to hear from anybody out of Marlborough County.
That's true. You have a free, you know, system in, in Chesterfield, go use it, go enjoy it, I'm sure you're happy with it. You don't pay for it. Of course you love something you don't pay for. You know, when it's time for you to do it and you have to pay for it, well, you know, figure that out yourself then. Don't come tell us what we need to do, because, you know, we're a tight community because we're all broke. You know, that's why we're here. You know, we're tired of stuff getting added to our bills, you know, that we don't want, don't need. I've, I've used, you know, I've used it. You know, I've used it the last few years. I don't have to pay, you know, and up somebody else for the same thing. And if we do, you know, it needs to be with somebody, but not, you know, Texas. I'm sorry, you know, if you're from Texas, go sell it in Texas if you're, if you finish up there, go somewhere closer, we don't need it. You know, it's great, yeah, but, like I said, you know, I don't have much to say, but, I mainly want the council to, you know, get ahead with the time, start posting on social media. The sheriff's office is doing a great job here lately about keeping people informed of, you know, what's going on. The council needs to do the same thing, you know, let us know. So, like I said, I'm sure happy people who've been here have not been up for the past few days posting about this. Thank you, Karen.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Rick McLeod, Jr. And I'm here representing the fifth, the fifth District Five, along with Mr. Jackson over there. And I came to tell you all, we want the opt-in. In other words, you put this thing out there where you got to opt out. A lot of people don't look at their taxes, they're preparing for this, and don't even know what they're paying for. If you've got more than one property, how do you, how are you gonna, you know, separate that? Because if you've got two or three properties, and you charge me a hundred and eight dollars on each property, I can only use this thing one time. And anyway, this teleme, telemedicine, telemedicine should be free. I don't know, I don't know where they've been, but like I said, especially during, uh, COVID, USC had telemed, telemedicine going back and forth, because I used it, and it's free. And the bottom line is, nobody's gonna give you health service unless they've got your insurance, or they know where they're gonna get their money from anyway. So if you're gonna do this thing, make it opt-in, don't force anything on us. Because if you force it, if you force it on the people, then we can change the board. Simple as that. But I just, I'm, I'm here to tell you, don't force us on anything. In other words, opt-in, that way, anybody that wants it will come and use it. People that don't want it, then we don't have to worry about it. Because if I, I've got a couple of properties, and I don't want to have some people running up there every, every year telling them, "No, you take this, this hundred paid off here, and take this hundred paid off here." You, you're gonna inconvenience everybody. In other words, if you do it, make it opt-in only. That way, we don't have to deal with it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, my name is Jeanne Pay. I'm a Marlborough citizen, and have been just like all the people all my life. There was so many people that thought of so many good points with multiple properties. People who really may leave this service, and they're not here today because they're working, then I challenge our council and our citizens of Marlborough County to come up with a solution like Chesterfield did. If I leave Chesterfield County, I can sing praises too, because I'm hitting through a grain, as I'm sure everybody else will. I also lay a great point about the, uh, services that are provided by, in our surrounding areas, that's also a challenge. That's an option for us to look at also, that I would like the council to look at or investigate, and see what else is available. This sounds like a wonderful program, sir, and I'm sure people benefit from it. But I don't want it taxed on my, I don't want that put on my taxes. I want to have that option. And I see why you may not want people to opt-in, because once you have a, a subscription to some kind of service, if you don't use it, you forget about it, and you're still paying for it. So the people that would like to opt-in, give them that option. Make it further, we don't use, a lot of people have stated, they don't get the Marlborough Herald anymore. I don't either. There's lots of ways we can get this information out there. And, but that won't put people to the side, but I definitely am against me having to opt out, and making it up here to the courthouse to take care of it. Thank you.
My name is, uh, Ellen McKiever, and, uh, I got, I'm a citizen here in Benfica, Marlborough County. And, uh, but I'm a veteran. So I go along with the rest of the Marlborough County residents. And, uh, to make a long story short, I go to the VA in Columbia. And it don't cost me nothing, they even pay people coming. And, uh, you know, that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, my name is Jared, and I've seen, and I'm a transplant, I've been dying for forty-eight years. Uh, and I, and I agree with what you're saying. We got carriers, and we got taxes, and I have no problem paying taxes, and I don't want to pay unnecessary taxes. If you want to opt into it, that's a choice. And it's simply me, I shouldn't have anything to do with it, because I don't want to need it, I don't want it. But my biggest concern is why I'm here. I lived in my office, and I didn't hear what you, I don't know. Why the money in county, or the majority of people in this county don't know what's taking place? They say it'll be community need, and for, first thing about community need. So this needs to be stopped, about having stuff like this taking place, if the citizens don't know anything about it.
Uh, my name is Gloria Morris, I live here in Benfica, South Carolina, I've been here basically all my life. I'm a ten-year cancer survivor, and I, um, go to the cancer center in Long Beach, South Carolina. Now, they do have telehealth. I talk to my doctor through telehealth, and it's also free for me. But I saw them saying that it hasn't been put out in the public. Ms. Lawson, she be at the grocery store anywhere, she's gonna get it out. She comes to my house, our neighborhood, so no one can say that it's not being put out, but she does a very, very good job, she's gonna stop everywhere, whether she's in your district or not. Ms. Lawson is there for you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Tom, how you doing?
Good, good, how you all doing? My name's Michael Thompson, working for Marlborough County. And most of the owners of the properties in Marlborough County. And like the gentleman spoke before, it will be added to all the real property, I understand, just like the solid waste. And I understand that being added, everybody has a plan, it happens a lot. But everybody won't need telehealth. Everybody won't need telehealth. Although there are some people that do need it, but what we are asking now is that we shouldn't have to have the people that own the property to pay for everyone else who need the service. I understand when we take, when we pay our taxes, we paying for EMS, we paying for rural health, we paying for schools, county operation bonds and whatnot, but we're at now, that the county is getting involved in healthcare. And that's a private entity, where we all have some type of insurance though that don't bear Medicare or Medicaid, for the ones that don't have that. And I think a lot of these offices do offer telehealth. Sometimes I think you have to talk to your doctors and your healthcare providers, and see, do they offer? I'm not sure whether this is a good idea for the county to get involved with a private entity in collecting their fees for, uh, their services. Now, I, I'm not saying that it's not needed, because yes, in the middle of the night, some people do need to get home to a doctor. But I think too, by establishing relation, relationships with the people that are currently providing your healthcare, they may offer, and if they have enough patients that offer, asking for that service, they might even start it up and start to do it. So we have to look at all options in there, and I would hope that we don't just add it to the bill. You know, someone said it earlier, that you kind of forget about subscriptions. You do. You know, I have some magazines that come to the house and I only read anymore. And the thing about it, if you have a mortgage, if you have a mortgage, and something get added to your taxes, they're gonna recalculate your payment at your bank. And your payment's gonna go up every month, whether you do it or not. And if you're a landowner and you rent properties out to other people, you're paying for them to get a service. And I don't think that's bad to a landowner. I think if the citizens are needed, and if you come to me, you need to offer it where they put a one-eight-hundred number in, and if people want it, they can call and pay nine dollars and get the service. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Robin O'Toole. I have been from Marlborough County for twenty-five years now, I've never seen anything like this in my whole life. Where I came from, all this kind of stuff did not go on. Council has constantly, and have hid things from the people of Marlborough County. You try to do things underhanded, and you can be caught. I think that if the people of Marlborough County want this, they should vote on it, and I think that's where we need to go. Instead of you deciding for us.
I really can't say anything that hasn't already been said. But I've worked in Chesterfield County for thirty-seven years, and, uh, I know a lot of people over there. So I called them and asked them about this telehealth, and they didn't know what I was talking about. I said, "Well, you both be checking in," and come to find out, they get it for free. They got a state rent, they get it for free. But, but when that free is over, they're gonna have to start paying, and they're gonna, they're gonna look at it a lot differently then. But for the people that want to opt-in, that's fine, but don't make me have to do something and opt out, make sure it's on my taxes, and I, and a lot of people gonna miss it, that it being on their taxes and not know what's going on, because if it happened to me for a few people, my friend had to buy one of those fish wrappers, and, and I, and he showed it to me, that's no reason I knew what, what this was all about. So people really don't know, and the people that are hearing now... And the people that are hearing that, the crowd outside is because a few people got the word outside and when it, once it gets around in churches and stuff, y'all would really know a lot more about it. So, don't opt me in. If people wanna opt in, that's fine. But don't make me have to do something and opt out. I shouldn't have to do that if I don't want that service. That's what I got to say.
Next? Come on now, don't let me down. Somebody, somebody, somebody's coming.
Hello, my name is Seafar. I'm, I'm former mayor of Dennisville, so I've been on that side of the table to, to, to some rough decisions you guys have got to make. But I'm, I'm here as a business owner and a property owner. And I, I think, I, I keep hearing about opting in over and over again. And anybody that knows, that, that's not an option here. There, there's never gonna be enough people that are not opting in that want the service to pay for it, you know? So, your only decision is forcing it upon all of the landowners in the county, you know? That's the only thing. Everybody keeps saying opting in. But I mean, you guys know behind the scenes, that's not even an option here. So, so, I mean, that, that charade just needs to end, you know? This, this isn't, I, I have a business. I pay for, uh, I pay for a health plan for my employees. I had one, I had one employee who was supposed to do telehealth. He's been supposed, supposed to do it two or three times in the past, um, in the past month to get his, whatever mental health, um, medication and whatever he gets. Wouldn't ever do it. So, they, um, he's got insurance. I'm, I'm paying for half of it. He's paying for the other half coming out of his paycheck. Wouldn't, wouldn't even, wouldn't even take, take up on the option. And so, they, they pretty much forced him to come into the office scared that he might be a suicide risk or risk to everyone else, you know? Uh, I don't, um, I think it, it's very questionable that everyone here that was faithful for the service is mostly from out of town, you know? Um, that's, uh, people, uh, people, people are coming here from Chesapeake County that don't have any skin to gain, that, that aren't gonna be paying for it, you know? That are, that are just, they're, they're for it. They're, they're, it's, it's such a great, well, it's a grant program over there. And it runs out, it runs out later this year. So, let's see how it happens over there. Let's see how it happens over there when the citizens have to pay for it. Let's see, let's see what their council does. They, they haven't, they haven't made a decision on it yet. I mean, they could have already made a decision. It ends, it ends later this year and it won't. So, it feels so, it feels so great and so many stuff there says we're paying for it. Why haven't they gone, gone ahead and put it in place and come up with a way to pay for it, you know? And it's, uh, this is something that, that's only either, people either, they have their own health insurance, if they're, if they live below the poverty level, they qualify for Medicaid. If they're, if they're a senior, they qualify for Medicare or other, uh, people have many, you know, insurance options. The fact of the matter is, the uninsured, they don't own property. And so, they would be the main ones that are never needing it, whatever percentage that is. I don't know if you guys have done these studies to find out what percentage of people that is. But they're the ones that need it. They're not gonna opt into it. What are, what are they opting into? They don't, they don't have any property on the map number, you know? If, if you're a renter, what, what are you gonna opt into? You, you don't have anything opting into. So, so this, this charade about that, that we're just, they're just gonna be a big option and it's gonna pay for it.
Thank you, sir.
It's not gonna happen.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? In the back? That's it? Thank you, sir. Um, public hearing does not close. Thank you, thank y'all for coming in there and speaking. Don't give us no ideas. Um, next we have, um, old business. Old business number eight-five-one. I wish, I wish the noise would down a little bit. Try to whet some of the noise aside a little bit. Okay, uh, ordinance eight-five-one, the ordinance of the county council of Marlboro County, South Carolina, approve an agreement with Pathway Physician Texas P L L C. And authorize the implementation of a voluntary opt-out, opt-in fee of nine dollars per month to be added to the county of Marlboro tax bill. Providing severity clause, providing repeal clause, and providing effective date. Third reading. Um, Mr. Administrator, anything you need to add?
I don't have anything to add. Uh, citizens of Marlboro County have spoken, um, heard during the public hearing, uh, wishes of many of our citizens. You've also heard from your doctor about the program itself. We've spoken about it several times. We have had, um, community hearings. Um, I know council is seeing, uh, came one that we had out of Wallace and then we had one in, uh, McCall at a school. Um, and so, council's heard, it's been heard. It's up to council at this point.
On the third reading, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I tell you about what my motion will be. My motion will be if Pathway Physicians, I think if we're coming wanting to operate here, it'll be totally up the opt-in, opt-out. I take everything out of the, out of the ordinance like it was the second time. It's the second reading.
The third reading.
As the second reading stated, uh, the authorization, implementation for them to operate, it took out the opt-in, opt-out. You know, it's, it, it takes a, it costs everything no matter what. So, uh, my vote's not to, not to move forward with their meeting. So, my motion is not to take it for opt-in, opt-out. That would be my motion. My motion would be to allow them to operate but do, have no opt-out or opt-in on county tax fees, period. That is my motion.
So, so we're not even voting yet for discussion. You're saying change the wording of the ordinance. Is that what you're saying?
That, that's, that's the way from what I heard tonight. That's what we were doing.
No, no, she said, what, what are you saying about, about the ordinance? With the ordinance.
Clarifying for the ordinance is, in order for anybody to operate here, for on the county, if it comes from anything from the county, we have to take, if it's one thing, just like any fee, has to go out for bid. It has to be available for bids for anybody. So, if you put a fee on it, just like the trash, the trash went out for a fee on the taxes, but it had to be bid out for it, for whoever wanted to have it. I mean, that's our policies. I mean, so, to be able to put something on here, I'd refer to the attorney if he wanted to clarify, we can't just add a fee without putting it out for bid on if, for any kind of service. Is that correct? That's correct. That's our policy. We have to. Yeah, so, so, but, but, so, if we wanna vote on that, then we'll make another motion, however we want. But I mean, I'm.
Mr. Chairman, if we, if we change ordinance, we would have to strike back.
We can just, we can just do the, uh, change ordinance right here at, uh, at the third reading.
And I, I agree that we should do that.
So, in other words, uh. We need to, we need to postpone this ordinance eight-five-one, um.
I said that all along though.
To, um, to look at an opportunity to, um, uh, revisit.
Mr. Chairman, uh, let me just say on, on that behalf, if we are going to not accept the ordinance as is, then I, I, I refer to our attorney. I think it should be defeated and then re, re, then reintroduced in any kind of way that the council sees fit to change that ordinance.
Okay, I understand it. All right, so.
We're just changing the ordinance.
Gotcha. Well, we need a, uh, need a motion before we move any forward. We need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we not accept ordinance eight-five-one.
Second.
Okay.
That was not acceptable?
Not acceptable. Any more, any more discussion, any more discussion on this issue?
Discussion, I had to have a discussion. I have a discussion because, uh, dis, no disrespect to council members whom this was first introduced. I did in, imply that we need to reconsider this ordinance before it was put out. I just wanna put that on the record, that I did ask council that we should have reconsidered that before it was put out this one. So, that's the only statement I want to put on this floor. I'm not against telehealth, but I'm against the way we are doing things. So, thank you.
Okay. Got a motion, got a second. We heard discussion. All in favor of, um, defeating that the seven, the ordinance eight-five-one, show hands.
It's not to accept.
Okay. All right, we, we moving on. Um, next we got a several bids, electronic signs.
Okay, so, as we remember from the last meeting, uh, we did have a bid, uh, for the signs that were open. And I, I need to get some clarification. I need to get some clarification, Mr. Dusa, about which of the, of the sign companies that was recommended. The one that was recommended was Media Fitness S and D Signs Unlimited. And they happen to also be the least expensive one at thirty-two thousand. Uh, they came and they were the only company to come and present a demo. The rock sign is also six millimeters as opposed to ten millimeter resolution. Uh, and they're the only company that has that. And it also comes with sun protection that allows it clear viewing in bright sunlight. So, they're by far the best company and also the least expensive.
Okay. Um, gotta get a motion to accept the, a little bid for the electronic signs. Sure move.
Second.
Any more, any discussion? Hearing the ordinance.
I have a discussion. I understand a low bid, but evidently since that was the only bid, I'm just not always in favor of a low bid type thing.
That was the only bid.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I know that was only bid, but this, this only bid, but I just, we need to find good ways to make sure information is out there. As stated here today, I just want us to be able to get, I know it's in the newspaper, but we really need to find a good way to get information out, especially when it has to do with bidding, even bids. So, I just want us to find a better way of getting and be more transparent the way we get information out.
Let me clarify that since you brought it up. Uh, that bid was put on speedboat as all bids are supposed to be done by law. And so, it was put out all over from the South County Assembly Board, putting out bids as, as it's supposed to be. And we got several bids on that. So, there wasn't really an issue for that. And we're not just going with the lowest bid. We're going with the lowest bid that happens to be the highest quality. That, that company was the only one, and everyone had, came for the free bid, they're the only one that actually came out and did a demo of their sign. They're also the only one that has a six millimeter resolution, which means a lot more resolution than a ten millimeter resolution. They're the only ones to do so. So, this recommendation is not just because it's the lowest bid of a few bids. There were several bids, but it's the only one that met the criteria that, that it meets. And it's the only one that actually came out and cared to come and do a demo for us. And, and the quality that they're offering is a lot better than what, first of all, a lot better than the sign we have here, uh, that was much more expensive, uh, and a lot better than the other ones that were presented.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Uh, we just had a discussion. All in favor of accepting, um, the bid of thirty-two thousand? Show your hand, please. Unanimous. Okay, next we have, um, a bid for lawn care.
So, we had lawn care bid. Um, we did have several companies that put into that bid. And just so that the council understands that this is apples to apple kind, kind of, um, big situation. There was a big tabulation sheet that each company put together that itemized everything that is supposed to be cut, so they were getting on the same exact process. And we made sure of that. And we got them in. And you see this, you see this, the numbers that came out?
Right.
Um, there was, so with, with the low bid there, um, that's a low bid that actually does the exact same work as everyone else. And you have all the other numbers there. So, we provide all, all six companies that provide the bids, ranging from twenty-four thousand all the way seventy-two thousand. I, I know there's gonna be some discussion about why such a wide range. However, everyone was given a tabulation sheet and everyone filled it out. Everyone also had their insurance. They had their qualifications, licenses. Everyone of these companies were qualified legally. And they had the tabulation sheet, so they were able to be on even, even footing of what they offered.
Okay. Based on everything that you've said, um, can I get a motion for David's Industry, Industrial Lawn Care?
Motion.
Second?
It's David Industrial, sorry.
Okay, David Industrial. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion?
I, I just, I have question. The quality of the number, when does the process start? If the spirit is accepted today, when does it start?
It starts immediately.
Immediate, what, May first?
Uh, it will start this month, yes, yes, ma'am.
And, and to how long? How, how, what's the range?
It's gonna go through in September.
To September?
And because, and, and the reason for that is because once that grass actually grow quite as much, our people can handle everything from that because it won't need cutting. But, you know, once a month and sometimes the winter, some of those properties, because of the type of grass, don't need cutting at all during the winter time. So, uh, and that's how the other bids have been done, you know, through years past. It's been through the cutting season. Once the cutting season's over with, then our people handle that.
So, let me understand. Twenty qua, quality means at least twenty cuts or what?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't.
So, how many times, would they cut every week during that September?
The annual quantity.
Right.
And so, um, from May to September, through September, um, you know, you're looking at a, a six-month period, five-month period. Uh, through that time, they would cut twenty times. You know, that property.
Right, so July, August, September, okay? Usually Ju-, um, June and July rains a lot, so it's not gonna matter how many times it rains, they're gonna, the twenty cuts are up, that's gonna be it, right?
So, if, if we're doing, again, if we're doing five months, uh, May, June, July, August, September, that's gonna be four cuts a month on average. Okay, so that'll be once a week you're gonna get cut. And generally, we're not, we're not expecting to cut more than once a week. But it will be cut once a week, uh, for these different properties. Correct.
And then after then, October, our staff.
Our people will be able to take that because the grass won't be growing no one year as fast. And we can do that. We have the, we have the, we have the staff. We have the workforce to be able to cut grass if it's done once every two or three weeks. But we can't keep up with the summertime. As we all know, it, it, it's very difficult to keep up, so we have to contract it out. And like, as we've been doing, you know, every year before now.
My concern is this. Our staff, I hope that during this time, so that, does that mean that our staff, not a part of this, will be cutting grass in our own, in our neighborhoods?
Yes, because that's.
They will be cutting grass in our, in the neighborhoods and our districts.
Right, that's.
That's what I'm concerned about.
So, the purpose of having this is so that it will free up our people to be able to cut roadways, sideways, neighborhoods that we aren't supposed to be cutting. That does free them up. But if we have to cut leaves, we don't have the staff to cut leaves and cut in the neighborhood. And that's why we contracted it out. And that's why it's been contracted out.
Mr. Chairman, I, I wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Administrator, um, I don't see the airport on here. How's that, is that handled?
So, that's cut by, that is cut by our people.
Okay.
That's cut by the, the public works staff.
And I do see that.
The airport, uh, is cut by public works. Uh, the parks are cut by Parks and Recreation, that includes the, the, the parking lot. And so, these are just for these properties right here that are listed. And those properties, Marlboro Park, Marlboro County Charter Grounds, Broad Street, and Farmers Market. That's what this bid is for, the main thing goes.
And I do see that the low bid is a, a local, uh.
It's a local, it's local company.
A local contractor. How many are out?
The only one that's out of town would be the one for fifty-one, and that's D and E Outdoors. That's the only one that's out of town. The others are all local.
Very good. Okay, we got a motion, have second, have discussion. All in favor? Show your hands. Of accepting this con. Accepting, um, the one-four thousand, yes. Okay, those opposed? Those abstained? Okay. We got, um, a, um, a favor with, um, again, one, two, three, four. We got, um, a, um, a favor with, um, again, one, two, three, four?
In favor of the low bid.
Okay. Okay, so, um, David's, um, got the most votes. You got one abstain? Okay, all in favor of the low bid of David Industry, show hands.
All right, it's time for you to give your hands up, okay?
We got four. Okay, any abstain? Two. And one, no. One opposed, okay. So we got four, um, four yeses. Okay. We have, um, can I get a motion for adjourned, please?
Second.
Motion, we made a second. This meeting is adjourned.